Of the Board meeting.
Recording in progress.
On Monday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four to order. And we will begin with roll call. Trustee Booker?
Here.
Trustee Woods?
Here.
Trustee Owens?
Yeah.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Thompson here. President Montgomery present and currently Trustee Grease is excused. Um, so we would like to invite the audience to join us for the plan of the case.
I'd like to be considered the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next minute's request that Trustee Grease is here.
Got it, thank you. Thank you.
Um. Any person divided or unheard.
Yes, just one that leave in eighty sixty nine North Sherman Boulevard.
And you'd like to speak to which item?
Yeah, I want to speak on about the county plan for some of this.
Well, that's not on our agenda tonight. Um, do you want to be denied or do you want to come back for that? I don't know because I'm together.
Well, I just have some some comments.
Yeah.
Okay.
You you want me to?
You have you can have two minutes. You want to give? I know what the county work is, but you want to add more?
I was just gonna say, uh, this will be an item that coming to the board in late November, early December. Um, I think is it or actually it might be the first meeting in November where we'll have an update from the county on that. Matthew, do you have an update on that?
I do. So I did talk with Mark Hilliard, uh, he's the engineer. For the project and he is able to come and give an update on that at the November twenty, the the second meeting in November.
Eight, that'd be the eighteen.
So he's available on.
So do you want to wait till then?
November eighth.
Okay.
So it's fresh.
Yeah, I. Yeah.
Want to do that?
Yeah.
And if you have something written, you want to submit, you can certainly do that. But and you can talk to the meeting too.
I'm cool.
All right. All right. Uh, um, move forward, uh, anyone else? Okay. Uh, moving forward, the next item on our agenda is item four, elected officials of staff reports. Um, those are in your packet. Any questions or comments related to those reports, um, Trustee Owens?
Yeah, I just had one, not only if the lady was talking about the same thing, but about the Hanson storage. Um, that there was a new owner and future construction plans, can you guys can share?
Nate, you want to take the lead with that?
Sure. So we did meet with, uh, an individual that is currently under contract to purchase Hanson Storage. Uh, it, uh, is a development group out of New York. They own other manufacturing and light industrial properties throughout the country, several in this area. They look, they're looking to add this to their portfolio. They're in their due diligence period prior to closing. And so they inquired, uh, with us about zoning incentives and, uh, the county project along Sherman and what that may entail. As it relates to the land, uh, that they're looking to acquire. So we talked about that project, artif assistance packages, uh, artif districts, and just had a general discussion. It really is yet to be certain as to whether or not they will continue to close, but it seems like they're turning in that direction. So the Hanson family, the owner, they have several long-term leases ranging from three to over five years. Uh, on a lease to the building, so they're generally fully occupied this time.
Right, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we will move forward to our consent agenda, which is consideration of minutes from our October second meeting. Uh, consider approval of a one-ton patrol truck replacement truck number one three eight three and it's a purchase. Consider approval of a grounds master van or replacement purchase. Consider approval of skid steer attachment for winter operation new purchase. Any questions on any of these items on the consent agenda?
So I do have a question on my seat. Uh, what are you going to do with the old one? Are you still going to ask?
No, so the old one, um, that grounds master, we have a trade-in price for that, and I believe it was one thousand nine hundred dollars. They'll take you one away, drop you one off.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, can we entertain a motion to approve consent agenda?
That we have a consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Thompson and second by Trustee Johnson to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I said motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Under new business, aid review and possible action ordinance twenty four hyphen oh nine and ordinance to amend. Section one two one hyphen one nine four and one two one hyphen one nine five to add high-end. Collectible shop to the B three and B four commercial districts. This is an item that came before the plan commission on last Monday. And I will defer to, um, Nate if there's any description, I believe, if you don't agree.
Would you like perspective on?
Just about what we're asking from the president.
What are you wearing or pushing ahead? That's how to collect.
Approve.
Appreciate.
Okay. So, uh, this did go before the plan commission last week and received a unanimous recommendation. Uh, what, uh, you have before you is, uh, Mr. Bergstrom owns a collectible shop in Volbatosa, uh, for trading cards and sports memorabilia. And he is looking to move that to forty-three twenty-four West Bradley Road. It currently is a medical office building, uh, and it's been that for many years. That business is moving out, ending on an operation. And, uh, Mr. Bergstrom is looking to close on the purchase next week pending, uh, tonight's action. The plan commission did have a few questions about the code change. What we're looking to do is add in high-end collectibles into the B four district, which is primarily an office district. And while we were looking to do that, we also thought it made sense in the B three district, which is our, our broadest commercial district. So this would make, uh, a collectible store, uh, permitted use, meaning would not need any other approvals. Another higher value, we want to locate in the district similarly. They could simply go to our inspection department, get an occupancy permit and be on their way. So that would be the change to the code that we're looking to do here. And then this, of course, will authorize Mr. Bergstrom's guard shop. So there was a unanimous recommendation, uh, we think this makes sense and are recommending approval of the ordinance before this evening. I'm sure Mr. Bergstrom or his agent, Mr. Martin, could answer any other questions.
Thank you, Nate. Um, any questions of any of the trust? Trustee? So what I don't, you have to go.
Yeah. Um, also, but, um, lots of, uh, high-end graded cards and, um, jerseys, frame jerseys and helmets and balls and. Yeah, everything that comes with the sports, uh, collectibles and memorabilia, um, world. Uh, mainly, you know, it's, it's predominantly sports card, but it's also memorabilia.
No harnesses?
No arms.
You got your heart and beautiful.
Oh, okay. Um, middle of March. What is the average value of your collect? Um, the, I mean, I like the average value of like a between a frame jersey that averages five to six hundred dollars. And a autograph card that averages between fifty and a hundred dollars. I'd say you were about at seventy-five or a hundred dollars. It's the average sale. I mean, there are, you know, smaller, uh. I know some people, anything is. No, nothing that's crazy, crazy, uh, uh. Nothing like a house.
Other question? If not. Can we entertain a motion, um, to amend this ordinance?
Um, I'll make the motion. I move we approve ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine and ordinance amending section one twenty-one dash one ninety-four and one twenty-one dash one ninety-five. To add high-end collectible shop to the B three and B four commercial districts.
Is there a second? And I believe we do a roll call. Um, it's been moved by Trustee Woods and second by Trustee Owens. Um, roll call, Trustee Booker?
Aye.
Trustee Woods?
Aye.
Trustee Owens?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Grease?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
President Montgomery. The amendment has been approved unanimously. Welcome to Brown Deer.
Thank you.
What's the next item on our agenda? Is there view of possible amendment twenty-four hyphen ten? An ordinance to amend chapter six, animals article one in general, to allow for the keeping of chickens.
Thank you, President Montgomery. Uh, this is an ordinance, uh, as, uh, the title suggests that would allow for the keeping of up to four chickens. Uh, female chickens in brown deer and would prohibit, uh, the keeping of roosters. And there are generally various provisions that would need to be followed in regard to health, safety, sanitation, uh, and so on. As it relates to the granting of an annual permit for the keeping of chickens. This, uh, ordinance really, or is before you now as a result of some action that proceeded earlier this year. Where there was a survey, uh, conducted, or I should say twenty twenty-three, a survey conducted demonstrating that over forty-eight percent of the residents in the village. Did support the keeping of chickens. Uh, and then additionally, a survey or excuse me, not a survey, uh, petition did come before the village board. And with over a hundred signatures requesting that this ordinance be brought forward for review. And so it was referred back to the plan commission. At our meeting last Monday, we did have a pretty lengthy and, uh, complete discussion of the ordinance. A lot of the questions centered on, uh, concerns regarding, uh, the precedent that we have seen or identified in other communities. In researching what is going on around us, we found that all of our, our, our neighboring municipalities do allow for the keeping of up to four female chickens. And we then followed up with the adjacent communities in our, our North Shore counterparts to understand what they're doing. Then found that most of the North Shore also allows the keeping of chickens. And we asked further what their stats were on the number of permits that are issued, number of complaints, violations and enforcement. What we found was that, uh, very, uh, there was a very limited number of complaints in most of the community survey. Specifically, uh, only in Glendale and in McQuon was there even a, an enforcement action or complaint. And there was only one in each of those communities. We also found that the number of permits that were active in any community was rather limited. Glendale having the most at about twelve. McQuon, uh, with four active permits and the others less than that. So Fox Point, Bayside, Shorewood. We did seek, uh, out information from the city of Milwaukee because they do allow for the keeping of chickens. Uh, multiple attempts to reach their, uh, neighborhood services department did not result in any context. So we don't have the data from the city of Milwaukee. But, uh, from what we've seen generally in our other neighboring communities, there is limited number of permits and limited number of issues that have arisen from the keeping of chickens. Further discussion of the plan commission also centered around two issues, specifically, uh, the enforcement side of. The keeping of chickens and what, what might be a reasonable timetable for people to come into compliance if there are issues. Originally, uh, we had it established as a twenty-one day period of resolution. After a discussion, it was determined that a fourteen day period of resolution was more appropriate based on the recommendation of the commissioners. That is in keeping with some of our other. Standards for enforcement action on other nuisance related in, related to setbacks in terms of the chicken coop itself. Currently, our code for the draft ordinance rather, uh, would have it that it needs to be set back twenty-five feet from any adjacent residential structure. The plan commission also recommended a property line setback. In discussion with the plan commission, we identified that our common setbacks for other accessory structures such as a shed or a garage are at five feet from any property line. And so what you have in your packet now is an updated ordinance that includes that five-foot setback as well as that fourteen-day. Period of, uh, compliance for enforcement action. So the, the last piece that I, I will leave you with and then can open it up to any question. Currently have chickens and, uh, want to keep them, you would need to come into compliance with our new standards of this ordinance and apply for a permit. That permit would also, as a policy matter, we would ask for a site plan with that permit application so that we know how this lays out. And whether or not it conforms to the various, uh, building standards that we call out for in the draft ordinance. And the permit fee would need to be established at a later date, most likely when we talk about our general, uh, fee schedule later this year. To establish what that, uh, may be in terms of an initial cost and a renewal cost. What we've seen generally in other communities is about a hundred dollar annual permit fee with a twenty-five or fifty dollar renewal, uh, charge. So with that, I could answer any questions and I'm sure, uh, Attorney Bayard could as well. Uh, the, the village attorney's office has been, uh, very helpful in creating this draft ordinance and kind of helping us make sure that it is, uh, as best we can create for the keeping of chickens.
One thing that, um, I would say under F three, would be changed the violation correctly within fourteen days. But it still says that the permit holder failed to correct the violation within twenty-four days. But that needs to be changed.
We can make that addition for correction.
Yeah, um, Trustee Owens?
Yeah, I just had a question. Who monitor and enforce? Let's see if it comes to me.
It would be essentially our first line of defense, if you will, or our first, uh, person that would probably investigate would be our code enforcement officer. There are opportunities for various. People within the organization, be it our building inspector, be it the health department, uh, be it a, a police officer who may be out on patrol or, uh, generally in a situation where they could see these chickens or have come across, uh, a neighbor complaining about it. They could also perhaps respond to it, but it would most likely reside with the code enforcement officer, uh, to begin further investigation.
Are these like free range chickens or do they have to stay in a?
They would have to remain within a fenced area. So it's not intended, you and you would have to diagram what that fenced area is. So they would have free range of their enclosure and coop. But it's not necessarily that you have your whole backyard be the chicken coop or the chicken enclosure.
I don't know. Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, what happens in situation, you lose a chicken, can it be there in the backyard or they're disposed of in proper way?
Good question.
I, I, I don't know. My assumption would be that, uh, we are, well, no, no. My study, and I, I have deferred it to Nate that is that we are not regulating, uh, how. An animal gets disposed of. There's nothing in our ordinance that says. You cannot put the chicken, a pet cat, a pet hamster in the ground in the backyard.
Yeah, that's all preempted by state regulation and I don't know exactly what the, but that would be part of the permitting process is you're demonstrating that you're competent in. In knowing the, uh, rules and regulations associated with harboring and keeping these types of animals, just as if you had an exotic pet or just as if you had a dog or a cat, um, uh, you know, in, in, in that respect.
But is something being in here about not, if a chicken dies that you could cook it? I mean, down on the bottom.
Well, we do prohibit the slaughter.
Yep.
Uh, is that in here?
That is.
Okay, well, and that's, that's, uh, hopefully you'll take care of that.
Yeah.
But we still need to be disposed of that.
Again, our, we're not addressing that. We're not proposing to address that here.
With a lot of the other municipal ordinance, that wasn't specified either. It, it's not. Yeah, I haven't seen none of that, so.
I'd like to know. Maybe. Just. They may not specify that, but I could see something, you know, some guys in this lane out into my trash or whatever. And I don't know if the, who was the thing that picks up role here?
BPW.
Yeah.
It, that you.
I mean.
But I think it's a good question.
Yeah, I was just curious because if you got eleven of four chicken and all four chicken dies at the same time for some reason, I can get another four chicken, what did you do to another four chicken?
Okay, um, Trustee Owens?
Yeah, I just made a comment. I think at one of the last meetings when we got the, uh, the ordinance signing chickens in there and the question came, do chickens, they get without rooster? And, uh, I found out that they do.
Wonderful.
Yes. But I was trying to figure out, why would you want a chicken? I mean, it's not like a, you know, a dog or something that you put on a leash and you walk, walk it around. They're kind of pretty, pretty dangerous. But, um, I found out that they don't need a rooster to have. That's why people get it.
I do have one other question, okay? You talked about the setbacks and you said that the setback had to be five feet from the property line.
Yes.
So in any situation, would the chicken now be closer to the neighbor than would be the owner?
That's what I believe is my theory.
Right, so it's like, you know, if you're on this big acre, I mean, big lot, your house is sitting somewhere. And then you go, you, you go straight to your property line and say, okay, I'm going to put this five feet just to make, you know, be within the parameters. Because then it's least restrictive to me as the owner, but more restrictive to the neighbor as the person who, you know, because.
So the answer to that is yes, it is possible that your chicken coop, uh, could be closer to your neighbor than your house. Example, uh, let's say you have, uh, two homes, uh, you know, back to back. And your home is set much closer to the road. And your neighbor's home is set much further back on the property. You might have a hundred feet before you get to your back property line. They may only have fifty feet before they get to their back property line. Both of those could be allowed by code, those setbacks.
Right.
And you are the one getting the permit for the chickens. If you decide to put your chicken coop all the way to the back and a hundred feet away from your house and five feet off the property line. Ninety-five feet away from your house and five feet off the property line. And now it is technically closer to your neighbors. So that could happen, yes.
Anyone else, uh, Trustee Grease?
Uh, so, um, for country for venturing from property line, will that require a survey?
So we would generally have on the application, you would have the ability to document where on your property that is going with the site plan. Very similar to fences, when we have a fence permit, you can either draw on an existing survey or an aerial photograph. We are not requiring a survey as part of this permit application. So it would be up to the property owner to adhere to those setbacks. If there are issues that come about with the chicken coop being too close, we can examine that and identify if it is, in fact, violation, in violation of the setbacks. Uh, if we need to at that point in time.
So I have, uh, concerns about, uh, safety. Uh, because we have wild animals in the jurisdiction. They travel in and out. I know people of my life. And I'm concerned that chickens could draw on these wild animals too. Uh. So that's a concern of mine. And then there's the noise factor. I don't know. I know they cluck. And when they're crow, they do cluck. Uh, so I mean, I just feel, and that's real concerns about doing this.
So with respect to the attraction of other predators, coyotes, what have you, uh, that's not something that any of the other jurisdictions identify as an issue. Uh, Glendale, Fox Point, River Hills, Taquon. The amount of permits that are issued in all of those communities are very, are really pretty low. So we're not necessarily, uh, going to have. A hundred chickens, I don't think, uh, judging on these other community experiences. Some like McQuon have had their ordinance in effect for ten years. Uh, and they've only had about four or five permits a year in all of McQuon, which is, uh, very low. So I think there's a lot of other, there's a lot of different things that attract coyotes and, and wild animals, you know, including, uh, you know, people leaving garbage out and leaving food out in their yard. That to say perhaps a few chickens is really going to exacerbate the issue. I'm not hearing that from other places. Uh, but it is a concern that others have shared via email and in their note, in their letters to the village board. But we did ask those questions, not heard it to be a big issue. As for the noise, the biggest noise comes from the rooster. That is prohibited in the ordinance. I'm sure chickens make noise, but I have a dog that lives next door to me and that thing makes more noise than any chicken I imagine.
Other questions? I think the other thing we, um, I just want to. Think is that we did have seventeen, uh, emails that we got of residents that were concerned. Uh, not all of them were posed. Different, but just for the record. Um, and it was in the tracker as well as in our board packet. So, um, with that being. So, um, with that being said, is there a motion to amend this ordinance to allow for the keeping of chickens?
Um, so I move to, uh, amended uh, village code or ordinance twenty-four ten. An ordinance to amend, uh, chapter six, animals to, um, article one in general to allow the keeping of chickens. With the amendment be discussed with fourteen days.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Been moved by trustee Greaves and second by trustee Johnson to, uh, amend ordinance twenty-four ten, chapter six, article one in general to allow for keeping of chickens. And this is a roll call. So trustee Booker? No. Trustee Woods? No. Trustee Owens? No. Uh, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Greaves?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Montgomery? Yes. The ordinance, um, and I'm assuming it's simple majority attorney, five?
Yes, that's correct.
So the ordinance has, uh, been adopted to amend chapter six, um, to allow for the keeping of chickens. Uh, the next item on our agenda is, um, motion to adjourn, song six thirty-two.